Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in Monday, June 17, 2024, 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Fornier, and Commissioners Mejia Edwards and Klaus all present, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and our two Assistant County Managers, Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. All the virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have two items, and Commissioner Fornier, who has a hard stop, we were hoping to reverse the two items just to make sure we get the discussion in about the Charter County Advisory Vote. So my proposal is to handle that one first, and then we'll go to external boards and commissions. So this was, I guess, kind of the last, if we were interested in a November Advisory Vote at the public, this would kind of be the time where we would need to direct Prosecuting Attorney's Office to develop ballot language. We would not have to decide today if we're putting it on the ballot, but we would have to spend the time to direct the Prosecuting Attorney to prepare the language so that in late July, we could then make the decision we were going to do that. I would argue that that wouldn't be time wasted because I think all five of us have expressed an interest in this. It's just a matter of timing. So even if we decided not to put it on in November, we'd have the work done for a proper ballot initiative Advisory Vote. So since I am interested in this, I guess I'm proposing that we go ahead and have Prosecuting Attorney do that preliminary work. That would give us a couple more months to talk about it, think about it, talk to the public, whatnot. We wouldn't have to make a final decision until end of July. And then I would also point out that this is an Advisory Vote, so no matter how the vote came out, it would not be binding the Commissioners to doing anything. We could just say, oh, public's in favor of it by 52% or by 58%, or they're not in favor of it by a margin of 56 to 44. It wouldn't bind us to do anything. We could time it out. But I just think that, I'm very curious about the public's opinion on this, and since this is going to be a high turnout election with a lot of things on the ballot, it'll be a cheap time to do it and a high turnout time to get a, to take the temperature of the public on the issue. So we're the last biggest county without a charter, so I'm just curious to see where the public and Thurston County's at on it. So that's, that's my proposal for today. Commissioner Fornier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your, your comments. I, I, you know, I've followed this for a long time. The, the previous charter effort, I, I was an advocate for, but mainly because it, it moved us from three to five Commissioners, which I think was really important. So I, I was an advocate in the past. I'm not as interested in it right now. I, I think the, the timing is, in my opinion, poor. We, we just had, not poor, I shouldn't use that word, but it's not right. We, we just had a big presentation this morning talking about the, the facility needs that we have, the capital facility needs, and I think that that is like the biggest lift and that should be the biggest focus for the county. And, you know, we, we've got our, our other stakeholders that are, we're going to need to be on board with that discussion. And one of the biggest things that they said is that they need to know that we're all in on, on the courthouse needs. And I fear that something like this is another big issue and it would muddy the water for that discussion. So, you know, I'd prefer to not make this a, a focus of the, the county right now while we, while we try to solve the, the, the really big, you know, kind of needs for the courthouse. My opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards?
I guess I'm going to invoke past County Manager Romero on this topic. We always used to have a little fun once in a while. I'd say, well, we want to do the right thing all the time. He'd say, well, we should do the right thing at the right time. And I don't think this is the right time, I guess. It's not that I'm totally against it. But if we're going to move forward with some discussions about spending $500 million or $400 million or whatever it might be for a courthouse, I think we need to start doing the right thing from the get-go. And this might be the right time to move forward, like what you're talking about, because it'd be cheaper or whatever. But the reality is, if we're going to ask the public for this much money as we move forward, talking about the needs of a courthouse and what Commissioner Fornier mentioned, that others, you know, don't want to muddy the water, so to speak, I, I think that's worth paying attention to. We're, we're not in a hurry. It, it could cause a lot of aggravation. How many little aggravating things do you want to continue to dump on the public? And I'm going to, I'm, I'm not going to be a popular person as I get done with this, but even things like, uh, the last discussion I had with one of the participants this morning, I kind of got scolded, I guess. But one of the things, I said, councilmatic votes. I have always opposed councilmatic votes because I think the voters should always get the say. So I asked this person, I said, is the homeless thing better today than it was two or three years ago, for an example? No, no, it's not as worse. But yet, we did a never-ending councilmatic vote to take care of homeless people, and we've not helped the problem in the least. We did a councilmatic job, uh, vote to solve the courthouse thing, which we have differing opinions. And I'm, I, I'm alleging, and I think it pans out, that only the unincorporated residents are paying for this $50 million deal. And I think everybody should pay if we're going to do it, but that comes back to a councilmatic decision. So I am not in favor of moving forward with the whole charter concept at this time until we figure out, what are we going to do? Are we going to try to figure out a way to move beyond the lipstick on a pig? I guess I'm going to use my seatmates. Are we going to try to move beyond that? And if we are going to try to move beyond it, I think we better start doing the right thing all the time if we're going to hit the voters up for the most they've ever been asked to participate in in the history of Thurston County.
Well, I would just point out that we have councilmatic authority to elect freeholders, and I'm proposing that we don't use that. We actually put it to a vote. So I'm doing the exact opposite.
No, no, I know. I mean, but even the issue, it, because what about this? What about that? There will be questions that'll be raised about it. I'm, there's some merit there, but I think we better really start paying attention to doing the right thing from now on until we figure out the courthouse thing and what we're going to do with the courthouse thing. It's a, it's a big issue. And, I mean, that's, I'm talking about setting the foundation. That's why I'm talking about getting an Attorney General opinion on, on this whole thing, because if we're okay, it might open up some other areas where we might be able to think about, well, there's 10 acres over here or whatever that maybe we wouldn't want to take a chance on. I wouldn't want to move ahead on a legal opinion out of the prosecutor's office, because I've been through that before. In 2004, I went through that. And so every, you know, I, I shouldn't have to, I shouldn't say this to an attorney, counselor, but, you know, when you have two attorneys battling something out, you got two different opinions. And so I don't know where we're at exactly, but I'm going to ask that we move forward on this AG opinion sooner rather than later if we're going to move forward about something to do with the courthouse, whatever we do.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Commissioner Mejia?
I am not opposed for the prosecutor to, like, review this, right? It sounds like there are, Commissioners would like to have more conversation about actually putting this on the ballot, but for the prosecutor to start doing the initial work on this, like, that is your proposal, right?
Yes. So we keep the, our August 8th or whatever it is deadline. That would be the drop dead date.
And, and so then the board can have further conversations later on, on whether we actually move forward and put this on the ballot, but at least that legal work is, legwork is done. And, you know, there, there can be, so I'm, I'm okay with moving forward and having the prosecutor review this.
Klaus?
I agree with Commissioner Mejia and your proposal, Chair. I think it's a good idea. I want to be transparent that I, I also agree with kind of what I'm hearing on the timeline of actually moving forward with a charter, but I think there's no harm in having some stuff get drafted up now so that it's ready early on. But I think putting it on the ballot in November would be too soon. But, yeah, I don't think there's any harm in having the prosecutor get started.
So County Manager, with no commitment to a November ballot, we have three Commissioners directing Prosecuting Attorney to prepare the ballot language that would be the predicate work for a ballot Advisory Vote, whenever the Commissioners would decide to put that to voters.
Thank you.
And we would like that done before August so that we could make a final decision in late July or whatever that, that deadline looks like.
They'll work with Prosecuting Attorney's Office to do that.
Okay, thank you. Then we go to reports on external boards, commissions. Were we going to finish? Oh, yeah, sorry. Let's set up the second item that we postponed from this morning, which is to decide how we're going to proceed with the discussion this morning about the courthouse renovation, setting up a subcommittee or whatever we want to call it and structure it however we want to structure it. I did get some, I guess, one of the Olympia Council members, Jim Cooper, was listening to us this morning and was letting me know that there, somebody asked how Olympia does their subcommittees. He said, all Olympia committees are remote, meet remote and recorded on Zoom. If you create a committee, it has to be noticed because it is a subcommittee of the body. And we got into that discussion on our side. Sometimes we will notice a subcommittee as a possible quorum if, if it's a bigger topic where all the council members might want to, to attend. He also suggested you could just direct two members of the board to work with the county administrator and not have formal meetings to bring a recommendation forward, not have, like, struck, you know, it could be, like, loser, as long as it wasn't a quorum. But if we want three, if we want to have public availability and we want to have three Commissioners, then we need to do it that way, and I'm fine with that way. We have three willing Commissioners. I would like to make a motion to establish a subcommittee for the next 30, an ad hoc subcommittee for the next 30 days consisting of myself, Commissioner Mejia, and Commissioner Klaus, along with the County Manager, to explore ideas for the courthouse. Is that enough? I'll second that. So any discussion on this motion?
Are, are we there to, at, at what point are we going to decide about the live streaming, public meetings, secret meetings? No, I don't know that secret meeting is the proper term, but...
Live streaming is a separate issue. There will be, by virtue of it being a quorum of the board, it'll have to be noticed like a proper meeting. I would like it to be called a subcommittee because I don't, I want the public to understand why Commissioner Edwards and I will not be there and not think that it's, we're just not showing up for, for school that day. So, you know, we should call it a subcommittee and have it noticed. It would be up to, Commissioner Fornier's proposal was to let the subcommittee decide about live streaming. I...
Okay, I'm, okay, well, I'm going to vote against that, but, just so you know.
Well, we're discussing it now. Yeah. Well, that's, that's fine. I mean, I think it's, I think the argument, it's akin to, you have stakeholders there, some of them are elected officials, some of them aren't. You know, words have to be measured in a way when things are live streamed that maybe isn't always the best when you're brainstorming ideas on, on, you know, something like this, a work session. So I don't know that it's the best structure to have a meeting like that livestreamed. Making sure that the people that are attend, that are there and providing information, you feel free to give their honest and frank opinions to the Commissioners. That's super important for us to be able to, for you to have the information you need. You don't always get that when, we're used to being livestreamed, but other people are not. And we kind of know how to navigate that as elected officials and politicians, but I feel like we don't always get the best discussion when we have, include non-elected and we, and, and people are like, oh, my God, I'm on livestream. They don't know how many people are watching. They don't know what the scope is. So that would be, I think, the argument to be made.
Well, I think these are very serious conversations, too. I agree with you, Commissioner Mencer. And I think if you actually want a solution instead of campaign speeches being said at a meeting where, like, the whole point of this is to strategize, to bring something, a proposal to the board that's going to actually have legs. And, you know, with it being livestreamed, it's going to be a little bit more measured, especially with different stakeholders. I mean, we got in trouble one time because I laughed at one of your comments that you made and we got called a circus. And like, it's things like that where whenever there's something that takes a lot of brain power and it's...
It's preliminary to the higher level discussion.
Yeah, I think the higher, like, once it comes to the board, that is going to be livestreamed. The public is going to have access to that. But that legwork that needs to really take place, it, it's just going to be best if people aren't going back and looking at it and just taking things out of context. Or I would rather just have this conversation with other electeds, with other department heads, with all of our different stakeholders and, and really just be able to, like, not have, you know, campaign speeches being thrown, especially when we're trying to bring something that's going to be productive to the board.
Yep. I guess if we're going to develop public trust, I think we have to be open to the public. That's nothing new from my position. And I think we learn the proper decorum to be careful. I was faced with this for about 40 years as a policeman where you had to be darn careful what you joked about, what you said in a very serious situation. And that's, policemen get in trouble on that once in a while because it's called dark humor. Because if you, if you aren't able to have some mechanism to, for a relief, you, you almost, it's unbearable sometimes. So you make light of some things.
Public defenders are familiar with that.
Yeah.
So we're fine.
So anyway, so I think if we're going to do the right thing and we're going to try to entice or get the support of the public, we need to have everything that we can available to help that. And so there are no secrets. Now, one of the nice things about having five Commissioners, any two of us now can talk about an issue that we might have a concern over. And that's not even an official meeting. That's just a conversation that we can have. But as far as being able to tell a member of the public, well, we already talked about that. And maybe they bring something, you, where would, where would I find that? Well, it might be in the minutes of a meeting that we had. But, you know, we all know that the minutes sometimes don't reflect much. They maybe meet, meet the bare minimum. But if you were able to say, well, go back and look at the June 15th meeting that we had. It's livestreamed. It's available to the public. And you'll see that we talked about this, discussed that, and so-and-so said, well, here's a good reason why to or why not to. So I'm, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to be, I don't want to be blackmailing anybody. We, we said we're going to try to agree on everything as we move forward. I've got nothing to hide from my public whatsoever. Even the stupid statements that I say once in a while, I come right out and just say, well, that's just, I'm kind of blunt. That's just the way it is. So I'm, I'm going to be a very strong advocate that we have everything open to the public, livestreamed, recorded, so we can refer back to it. Say, well, we already talked about that issue or, you know, Commissioner Mejia said this or that.
Sir, would you like, would you like to propose an amendment to the motion requiring every subcommittee meeting to be livestreamed?
I, I want every meeting having to do...
Okay, let's take that separate. Is there a second to that amendment?
This is, meaning my motion to establish a subcommittee to now make every subcommittee?
Meeting livestreamed.
What?
You can vote that down or you can add that on. Is there a second for that motion? Okay, that amendment fails.
Okay, I, I mean, you know, I'll be talking about it, so I'll just put that out.
Is there any further discussion on the motion that's been made by Commissioner Fornier?
I, I do, like, I don't want to belabor this, but like, I, I, I hear what, what you guys are saying about the, just being able to, like, brainstorm freely. And make, what changes that for me is the, it is, it is a quorum. And it would, there is the potential, if every, all three Commissioners are in agreement, that's, the Commission's decided, you know. So like, I, I don't know that it needs to be livestreamed. I don't know that it needs, what it, what is proper. But I, I do think that, you know, we're, we're making it open. It's open to the public. We're noticing it. But I, I do want everybody to consider the fact that if there's, with three Commissioners on there, and I think that's a good move, too, if we're all three in agreement, that's deciding every, that's deciding for the two Commissioners that aren't there, too. So you...
Unless you bring it back and we make arguments and change your mind.
Yeah, sure, sure. There's, there's the opportunity for that. But there's, you know, like, I, I'd want you to consider that, like, while, while you are gone, those, the three of the Commissioners, they may come to, you know, a consensus that, that you didn't get to see the full, you know, debate of. You may want that. Just consider that. I could go either way. But, you know, as I was listening to Commissioner Edwards talking, I was like, well, I'd maybe want to review those, you know, those discussions.
Okay, well, we have no more discussion, then we can vote on the motion. Still leaves the open the opportunity for the subcommittee to decide to make a motion to livestream their own meeting. We're just saying it's not mandated at this time because that amendment failed.
Yeah, I would suggest that be the first thing they talk about.
Okay, that's fair enough. And then I would remind folks that by having a subcommittee with three board members, you're in a position where you cannot have an independent conversation about the courthouse question during the time of the subcommittee's life. So just be aware of that. So I'll call for the vote. All in favor of Commissioner Fornier's motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So that motion carries four to one. So we'll have a subcommittee with Commissioners Klaus, Mejia and Fornier, and they will talk about the live streaming issue as well as all the other things we talked about this morning. Is that going to include, I'm looking at the County Manager, will that, will the, those discussions include some of the older studies with other financing? Okay.
I think that's why we need to create this platform, is to do a little bit of a deep dive to bring up some of the research and options that were looked at to determine are, are this, are the conclusions to those, to that research still valid? Or is there more thought that has to be given? Or could we take some of those options and look at them afresh or maybe merge and create a hybrid approach?
Okay, fair enough. Now we can go to external boards, and I'm going to go to Commissioner Fornier first since you have a... Commissioner Mejia?
I'll report on this last week. This Saturday was very busy for me. I attended the Strawberry Festival. I also attended the Juneteenth event in Lacey. Attended, I did a video for the Park Foundation talking about the partnership between the county and the Park Foundation and how that's evolving. And I also attended Rob Gordon's memorial. I went to the Rochester Sweet Day, and I want to congratulate Grace Morgan on being the new queen for Rochester Sweet Day. And then attended the DUI drug court graduation via Zoom. I have, I met with constituents, with Commissioner Mencer in regards to water system issues. And my time really has been taken up with just a variety of issues from coroner's office to courthouse issues to other things.
Commissioner Edwards? I had a meeting last week with the Washington County's Insurance Fund. And as to, no surprise to anybody, maybe the rates might go up a little bit.
How much are we talking about this year?
Not a big hit, not a big hit. It's, they're, you know, we've already had our big hits, right? And this is for the health insurance, so.
Oh, for the health insurance?
Yeah. Yeah.
Commissioner Klaus?
The only external board meeting I had last week was ORCA. That was a good meeting. We talked quite a bit about the burn ban and, and smoke-related issues. And I brought up the conversation we had last week about fireworks and kind of talked a little bit back and forth with them on that. And then there was an update on the Capitol Mall Triangle Subarea Plan. That's the only meeting I had last week as far as boards and commissions.
Where does that stand, that Capitol Mall Triangle Plan? What's the, where are they in the process?
I...
Sorry to put you on this bump.
No, that's okay. They're having, like, they're kind of in the conversation around development in the mall area. That's really the only note I took on that. And I wrote down July 9th, but I don't know what. And maybe that's the next conversation that they're having.
Fair enough, yeah.
Yeah, but it was pretty surface level.
I have a quick question. Are you, is that it?
That's it, yeah.
And Wayne, you mentioned that, the West Side thing, when we, you know, like, that mall area may be, be a courthouse place or something. But then Tyson, they were, there was opposition to the West Side. But you said something about that.
The original location was down Harrison.
Yeah, I was just saying that they're re-envisioning that area and maybe there's an opportunity for further discussion.
I mean, it's true that, like, yeah, there's some new stuff, what you were talking about, Commissioner, same as Wayne was talking about.
Same thing.
Okay.
That triangle area.
Yeah, okay.
Re-envision that whole side of town.
But they're trying to get more residential housing density and stuff. I don't think it's to create a new alternative downtown hub, like, like, like what the courthouse would potentially bring. And, and the other part of that, at the time, I don't know, these new locations are different, but at the time, that location required an, an exit ramp off the 101 onto Kaiser Road, which was like out, totally out of our control. Begging mistake. Yeah, I mean, it was just, it just, it was like, that, that was the only way that the traffic patterns and stuff would work. And like, I didn't want to, you know, that was just another layer of complication to that site. Okay, I had lot. I had, I don't think anything of consequence was there. I, I met with, this is the notes I was trying to pull up. I did meet with a group of stakeholders that's been meeting periodically regarding the issues watershed council. If folks remember, the... If folks remember, when we put our watershed plan together for the Deschutes, a watershed council was embedded in it. All the stakeholders agreed on that. The Squawson Island Tribe came to the board and said, we'd like to see some updated rulemaking on some old law, rules that weren't really working on in-stream flow. And the building industry, we agreed with that, and we put that in the plan, and then the building industry pulled out. By them pulling out, that meant we didn't have complete consensus, and so our plan wasn't automatically adopted by ecology. It basically got thrown into ecology's lap to write the plan. We, we lobbied ecology and said, while you're writing our plan for us, we wanted a Deschutes Watershed Council, and everyone agreed on that, so why wouldn't you just put that in? Well, they didn't do that, that's because, I think because they didn't want to create a precedent, you know, it's like, they're going to be writing plans for a bunch, they didn't want the obligation to fund and stand up all these other watershed plans. So our stakeholders, and this includes the Squawson Island Tribe, the Deschutes Estuary Restoration Team, the City of Tomwater. Many of the groups that were part of the rec group, it was called, that put together that plan, have been meeting about, how do we get a Deschutes Watershed Council? Similar to the Nusqually River Council. And so we've been talking, last year, our legislators told us not to pursue it because they were really like, working hard on the Capitol Lake funding, and they were afraid it would complicate the question, and they didn't think it was the right time. So we were strategizing on what to do this year, and looking at kind of next steps from my notes. If I can get this thing to pull up right. We came up with. There's going to be a letter going out, so county manager will probably get a letter, because it's being sent out to, to basically all the stakeholders from that process, to try to see if the legislature's not going to give us the $200,000 to stand it up that we've been asking for. What would be a stripped down, like, what would be the bare minimum to get this thing going, like, just to get it started? Like, the way we gave $10,000 to the Chehalis Basin Partnership when their funding went away, and Centralia did the same, and Graves Harbor did the same. So I think they're working on about 40 or 50,000. The idea would be amongst all these stakeholders that really wanted this council, you know, what would be the bare bones budget? You know, if we could create a budget of 50,000, maybe 5,000 from 10 stakeholders could stand it up and get it going. So you may see some further, an ask related to that, and sort of that would be something we could talk about at a later point. But I think it'd be a good idea if we could get that going at it, kind of, even if it's just sort of at a reduced scale. That was on, let's see, I've met with the folks with Carolina about the Dana Passage Water System, and they need a bunch of, it's a water system, it's a private water system on 83 connections, they need some major infrastructure improvements. And they can get a state revolving fund loan, but they're just worried about the scale and of the project. They need to replace about three miles worth of distribution lines that are kind of 60 years old.
Where, where's this at?
It's up at the, you know where Fish Trap, Little Fish Trap and Big Fish Trap, it's up there, like above Boston Harbor, the very tip of that.
Is it about the same age as Boston Harbor, is, is it like 100 years old?
It's about 60 years old, they said. So they were asking like, what options there might be for the county to help them with technical assistance, or just helping guide them through the project. We're going to meet with the Public Works Director and see what options might be on the table for that. Because if we don't, you know, the systems we've inherited that were, you know, are kind of a pain in our side, or because we let, we didn't let, but they failed because they were, the community was not able to keep them going, so I'm thinking a little bit of investment upfront, might be proactive, so that we don't have a system that fails and we end up having to inherit another.
Usually those are handled by the ratepayers, you know?
Yeah, and they understand that, but there are certain grants they don't qualify for, because they're not the right kind of entity. So it's like, could the county partner in some way and make them eligible for money that's out there?
Maybe they've got a piece of property they'd turn into a county park or something and make them eligible.
Something like that. So that's all going to be occurring, and that's about it for me. Sensing Guideline Commission, I did attend the mayor's forum with Commissioner Fornier, and was there any major topics there? We, Leonard gave an introduction and the.
That was the major thing, the rest of it was, you know, I don't want to get into the tree discussion.
Oh, yeah, the Tomwater Tree, we talked about, the port, the port director was there, and we had a chance, I got my first chance to meet her a little more.
Yeah.
So that was good.
We did talk about the idea of having a joint meeting with the port and the commission, which I think would be great.
And Lacey, Mayor Ryder was, he was talking a lot about a long-term vision of annexation of Tanglewild and Thompson Place.
Good discussion about that, yep.
And he really wants to find a path forward for a long-term plan for that. Which I think would be good, so we can get that going sometime in the near future.
I forgot to report on one of mine, the interbranch advisory committee. And just as a, had, the major conversation there was in really regards to just legislative updates from the different branches of our judicial system. But they were considering for the September meeting, they're, I've been asking for them to really come down to Thurston, so in September, they're considering two locations, and that's Thurston and Pierce. So we'll be waiting on Justice Gonzalez's decision on that. If in September they do agree to come to Thurston, they would like to take a tour of the courthouse, then it would be great to let them see kind of the state of affairs. But I would also like for commissioners to be available for that, since at least for all of you to introduce yourselves, I'll, once I have more confirmation, I will send that information out, but just wanted to give you all a heads up.
Okay, thank you. I have a commissioner item, if we have the time, we do, is that okay? So we have multiple applicants for the TRL board position. In the past, we did interviews for that position, and I feel like the two applications I've seen are really strong, and I think there's at least one or two more. So I kind of feel like we should probably go through that same process. It's an important position, and we have really strong applicants. Does that feel like the right decision?
Have to wait a month.
Yeah, we'd have to wait a month. But if we, if we agree on that, we could have staff kind of setting them up for those interviews, kind of to happen right when we get back from recess. You know, like, they were 20 minutes each, I think, or something, kind of like we did with Board of Health. Members, were you guys there for that? Yeah.
Speed dating?
Yeah, speed dating kind of, and just kind of hear their, what's their enthusiasm level, their knowledge, you know, what do they hope to, what's their vision? I just kind of feel like that might be the right thing, if, if, otherwise, you know, I'm going to. The alternative is, I'm going to ask to wait a month so that I can meet with them individually when I get back, so. But I feel like if you guys are interested, we could just do it as a board, okay? So if we could try maybe line up those up, and like, say, as fast, kind of as soon as possible after the recess, because we want to fill that spot and get the person routed to the other counties for approval. Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner items? Yeah, Commissioner Edwards?
I guess, beans, I didn't prevail on the livestreaming.
Not necessarily.
Well, I got to plant the seeds, though, that's my job.
Still to be determined.
So on livestreaming, if we, if we don't livestream, how about this? Then could we record those meetings? And just keep the recording for reference, so we've got something to fall back on. Now, it becomes subject to the Open Public Meetings Act if somebody asks for it. But at least if it's kind of a headache to do it, or you're thinking of the theatrics that might be involved in livestreaming or something, this might be a way around that particular issue, and you wouldn't have the campaigning maybe as much, I don't know. So anyway, so I would like to see that we do something like that, because you guys know I stick by my guns on, when I'm an advocate for something, so just so you know that. I'm going to try to win the battle that I can win, and if I don't win it, then I go a different route, that's just the way you do business, to get it done, so. Anyway, that's that issue, and.
So are you suggesting that you will, you don't win this battle, you will vote against every?
I am not suggesting that.
What is produced by the.
I'm saying, if I don't agree, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just, okay.
I have been, I've been impressed by your lack of ability to compartmentalize these decisions in the past. For example, the warrants on the tenant improvement to the atrium.
Okay, now, I wasn't going to bring that up, but the state auditor said I was right about that.
You were?
Yes.
In what sense?
That we didn't bid on that, we spent money improperly on that. That's what I've been objecting to all along.
You objected because you didn't want to, you didn't want to move here to begin with.
Oh, well, that's all.
You were objecting way before any of those decisions were made.
Part and parcel of the whole thing. I, when I say I'm consistent, I.
But you would have been consistent based on the fact that you didn't want to lease this space, whether we bid it or didn't bid it.
Because I think it was a big mistake, there's another piece of that.
So it wasn't about the, it wasn't about the bidding or not bidding.
Piece of it is, are we?
Nothing to do with your opposition, and nothing to do with all the votes that you took.
Are we legally here?
And now you think, you really think that the city, you really think that state law is that you can only seek county facilities in the original, not expanded?
Yes.
And, and, and so that every time county government wants to do something, it needs to pull out the dusty maps from the annals of time?
And I'm, I'm, I'm falling back.
Said that's not the law?
No, I'm falling back on what Christine Gregory wrote in 2004, she was the Attorney General. And she said, that's the reason you can't do it, is because five city commissioners then determine where a, a public office would be instead of a super majority of the voters.
And had this building been further, a little further up the road in, in the original thing, you would have voted to move there?
Yes.
That's the only reason?
That's the only reason.
I absolutely do not believe you.
Oh, yeah.
If the meetings are recorded, yeah.
Yeah, if we had a recorded meeting.
Watch back and you can see what he said.
I'll say, if we had a recorded meeting, you could look it up, good idea, good idea, Commissioner, good.
That is a, that is a revisionist bit of recognition on your part, sir.
Well, I guess, do we have a recorded meeting of it? I don't know.
I don't have the time to do that kind of research, but.
But.
I, I, my memory's not quite that.
I'll probably be around here, I'll be around for a long time. I'm just saying, if we record the meetings, we won't have that as an issue. Okay, that's, that's one thing, and if we go to the Attorney General and ask for that opinion, it doesn't cost us anything.
Can't you just email the Attorney General and say, can you?
No.
Has to be the board?
The board has to, I could, and I've always been able to do this, I could go to a state senator and ask for it. So I could go to Braun and ask him to do it for me, I've never really been crazy about doing that, because we are here. What do we do if they say, well, you shouldn't be there? I don't know what the answer is to that, but if we're going to look at any other kind of property, we better get an answer to make sure.
Put it downtown, we don't have to worry.
That's true.
Okay, we're agreed on that, downtown Olympia?
Oh, no. Have we got a homeless problem downtown and the sea level rising downtown?
We can, we can help.
Have we solved the homeless problem yet? No. Is the sea level rising? I don't know.
So urban sprawl, so because we, we've got homeless folks.
Well, that's part of it. Anyway, so those are my two issues, so if I, on the Attorney General thing, I'd say, well, why don't you want to do it?
Because it, I, I, there's no reason I don't want to do it.
Why?
There's no reason I don't want to.
Oh, okay, well, let's do it.
I just don't think it's needed, I've read the case law that Elizabeth interpreted, and I don't, and what I don't want to see is that you've said, is that if it takes, I don't know if they'll do it, if they'll tell us if they're going to do it, I don't want there to be this thing, and then you're, you won't vote on anything because we're waiting for some opinion that, does the Attorney General tell us? Like, if, if we make this request, do we get an answer immediately that, hey, you'll get an opinion within three months on this? If that's the answer, then sure, why not? But I don't think it works that way, that's not what Elizabeth told us, it's like, they, they can, it's in their discretion of whether to do it or whether or not, you don't know if they're going to do it, you don't know if they're not. I don't think it's necessary to do, because I'm pretty satisfied with the case law that I read. And so I just don't, I think it's just throwing something, it's making something.
There's a horse in the lobby. Just want to break this up for a bit and say, there's a horse in the lobby. It's little Sebastian, little Sebastian is here.
He's not joking, folks.
There is a horse in the lobby, yeah, a perfect moment, I love the debate. Really, there's something more important in hand? Can we invite the horse in, to end this whole thing? Can I, is that okay? Do you mind if?
It's working.
We're never going to get another opportunity.
Can you come in?
Who's cleaning up?
Mind introducing your horse to the county commissioners? All right.
This is so cool.
This is the best day ever.
This is the best day ever.
Super.
Howdy. That's so awesome. What do you got there?
His name's Apollo.
Hey, Apollo.
Hey, bud.
Welcome. Does he have a building project he needs to?
He's probably looking for a barn.
How old is he?
Uh, he's four, he'll be five in October.
He's pretty cool.
He's my bud, he was, so when he was a baby, he used to work at a petting zoo and did nursing home visits. And then when COVID happened, nobody could go in or do anything, so that all kind of shut down. Because he wasn't working, he ended up in an auction in Edumclaw. Lady in Olympia bought him, and she was going to use him for a kids program, she rapidly realized she didn't actually have time for any of that. And so she put him up on a website called Dream Horse, which is right about the time I was looking for a service animal, and my wife came home one day, and she's like, hey, did you know that miniature horses can be service animals? And I was like, uh, okay, keep talking. Because I had looked at dogs, and nothing against dogs, but the average span for a dog is about seven years. And the bigger the dog, the shorter lifespan, I'm not a small guy. So I was looking at like, every five years getting a new service dog, and that just wasn't real appealing for me. It lived 30, 35 years, so he'll be outlive me at this point. He's four.
Oh.
So.
Just a kid.
Yeah.
Well, good for you.
Thanks for showing us your horse.
Yeah, appreciate it, thanks for sharing.
Pretty much goes wherever I go.
How do you transport him?
Uh, I've got a minivan for a mini horse.
Okay, perfect.
I just hold the middle seats down, I put a, a rubber mat there.
Yeah.
Just so he's got more traction going up the hill to the courthouse.
Yeah.
Quite a, quite a steep hill, so.
Yeah.
I had gone over to, oh, I was trying to get a copy of my 214, but apparently they've moved over here now, so I went over there and went up, and he was like, hey.
That's hilarious. Well, you're welcome anytime, buddy.
Thanks for coming in. Absolutely. Hey, bud.
Hi, Apollo.
All right.
He does have his own website, oh, so if you want, apollo22.org is his website, and there's hundreds of pictures and all kinds of stuff about him, so. Apollo22.
Thank you so much.
Right, well, that's a great way to end this meeting.
Wait, now wait, it's not over.
Drag on, subject.
Okay, so on the AG thing, I guess my question is, why not? And it's all about setting the foundation for a new project. We better get the foundation level before we move on, so we don't have a question that comes up and then find out halfway through again.
Well, I'll, I'll do you this one, I will not support a project that's not within the original boundaries of the city of Olympia, so we don't have to worry. It's all problems solved, right?
Well, maybe, I don't know, what about our seatmates, maybe they would.
Maybe they would, I'm just saying.
Actually, what I'm thinking about is that if it's okay to do, to be here, then maybe they'll say it's okay, maybe. I don't know that. Who was the gentleman sitting in the very back over there? He came up to talk to me, I thought he was affiliated with Rick and part of the, some of the project, does anybody know?
No, the gentleman that was in the audience.
He was in the audience, all the way in the back. He what?
I don't, I don't believe.
No, he was not a staff member, no, he was a private contractor. Anyway, he's the one who came up to me afterwards and said, that's already been decided. Mortenson?
Oh, I should know his name, I'm sorry.
Anyway, he came in, and he said, why, is this in the wrong place? And I said, well, it's outside the original ceiling, oh, okay. So he's under the impression, and I think, I think he referred to 74, so I don't know. So he's under the impression, and I think he referred to 74, so I don't know.
Well, there was confusion in the 70s, which is why it went to court in the 80s, and there's a lot less confusion after the 1980s decision.
Elizabeth was wrong in 2004, when she said we can go to Tomwater.
Yeah, I'm not saying every lawyer is always perfect.
That's right.
But I actually read the case that she, I actually personally read the case that she relied on from the 80s.
I did too, but not, she didn't rely on the whole case, portions of the case she did. Anyway.
But I'm not worried because I won't support a project that's outside the original city.
Well, if they came forward and said, here's six acres that would be perfect, and here it is. And it was half the price of downtown.
Not not doing it. It's bad. I mean, if you remember the studies we had on all the different locations, the downtown location was. Absolutely superior on sustainability, urban design, transportation, accessibility, environmental factors. That it was overwhelming, which is why when we had two meetings of all the elected officials and all the department directors, it was unanimous. When we asked their opinion, two people abstained, but not a single vote was cast for any other location than downtown.
Courthouse fell in that same category.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm talking about.
No, the courthouse up there on the hill.
Oh.
Fell in that same category.
Yeah, well, that is within the city limits, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's original. Anyway, I'm just, I'm bringing that up, so. I guess all I can say is you'll probably be hearing more about it, and what I will or won't do, I don't know the answer to that yet, but I'm pretty consistent in my positions. So I just point that out.
But you can be, this is the thing that I've always not understood. You can be consistent. But then when an issue is decided through the democratic process, then there's another issue on the table. You don't have to, you don't have to say, well, that issue is a deal breaker. Sometimes it is, but it's not always that way. And you, and so you can say, okay, I lost that one, but now that this is the issue that's been framed, I can then take a vote. It's not being inconsistent with your earlier position, just because that issue's been decided.
You could be right.
Yeah.
You could be right, but not always, so it depends on the situation.
Yeah, it depends on the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Okay.
Please leave that possibility open, sir.
We can always leave it open.
Anything else we need to cover here?
There's a monkey in the lobby now. There's a monkey.
All right, well, I think we're at the end of the agenda, and we're adjourned.